Hello, everybody.
Eric.
David, this is Deanna. I don't know where my visual part of me is, but I'm here. Oh, there I am. Thank you, David. Oh, it is.
Lucky you.
Hey, Tony.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi. Thank you.
I think everyone's on except Kathy.
And what about the extra citizen board members? Did anybody, we knew one was, I forget who was, wasn't going to be able to make it?
Yes, Elaine is not able to make it, so we have that position not here.
It looks like we're missing just one.
We're all here.
Yeah, which is Elaine.
Seven.
Okay.
Nine, ten, eleven.
So...
Yeah, every, so, Mr. Chair, everybody's here that's supposed to be here. If Kathy's ready to start recording, we're ready to go.
And who was, who was Chair last year for the, was that Riley on the urban renewal budget?
It's Riley for both.
Is it Riley?
That's good. Take it away, Riley.
Susan for Vice.
Oh, well, how about it?
This is, this is Kathy. Can anyone hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Judy's having trouble with audio. Oh, she can't hear.
I don't have a picture on. I'm mute, Judy.
Don't you just love it when she's so frustrated?
No.
All right, there you go, Judy. Oh.
All I see it says, "When prompted, select yes."
You're unmuted now. Can you see everybody?
Anything. All I can see is, "When prompted, select yes."
Oh.
I see nothing.
All right. Well, we see you.
Well, that's Dad's statement, yours.
Judy, I had to go out and come back in because I couldn't even, I couldn't...
I did. I came out and I came, this is my second time trying to do it. Do I do it again?
Yeah.
Exit and come back?
Yeah.
That's what I did.
Right here says, "Join Zoom meeting." Click, click.
I think you have to exit before you can come back in.
I did.
You're still here?
Select yes.
Did you, did you try tabbing through your windows?
Did I what?
Tab through your windows?
I don't know what you're talking about.
If you hit Alt and Tab, it'll bring up the different windows on your computer.
Alt and Tab?
At the same time.
Okay, where's Alt? Alt and Tab?
Yes.
All right. Now what? It says, "New mail."
Did, did it bring up a window where you can see anything?
No.
Um...
Wait, yeah, there's people, right in the middle, but it's moving fast. Right there. Wow, is that it? Whoa.
If you see us, that's it. We can hear and see you.
Can I go home now? Okay.
All right, everybody ready?
Yeah.
All right. Kathy, are we good to go?
I guess.
We have a...
I don't have a picture of mine.
We have one phone number that's not identified. 992-3010.
Hmm.
Here, I can probably identify it.
Yeah, they just clicked. Who is that? On the phone?
Uh, hang on a second. I think I can identify it. It's Lila Bradley.
Hello.
Hi, guys. Sorry. My, my, um, video isn't working.
Okay. All right, so are we ready?
I, yes, I guess.
All right. I'd like to call to, I'd like to call to order Lincoln City Urban Renewal Agency's Budget Committee meeting. Today is April 20th, 2020. It's 5:00 PM. We are currently having this meeting, being Zoom conferencing. And, um, could we, Mr. Chair, can we have a roll call, please?
Dick Anderson. Dick Anderson.
Here.
Larry Armstrong. Larry? Can you un, can you unmute?
Yeah, hang on. Uh, Alt A, Alt A.
Okay, Larry, all right, okay. Judy Casper?
Here.
Estelle Harland?
Here.
Deanna Hinton?
Here.
Riley Holdland?
Here.
Kevin Honbaum?
Here.
Diane Kuz?
Here.
Mark?
Here.
Chester Norikus?
Yeah.
Nancy Oxenholt?
Here.
Mitch Parsons?
Here.
Elaine Starmer? Elaine?
She's absent.
Oh, that's right. And Susan Walkie?
Here.
Thank you, everyone, for joining us today. That's very nice. Uh, we are, next order of business is the election of Chair and Vice Chair. I'd like to open up the floor for nominations.
Where's?
What?
Find my hand. I don't see a way to put up...
It's a blue hand. Now, it's not on the bottom. It's invite me, but it's above that raise hand. Yes, no.
Oh, there it is.
Listen to...
Hi, I would just, I would like to nominate Riley Holdland for Chair.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to second for me as Chair. Uh, do you hear any other nominations for Chair of the Budget Committee, the Urban Renewal Budget? Oh. Give a little bit more time, I guess. Any other, suppose any other, uh, we have a motion to close the nominations. I'll move if we close the nominations. All right, we have a nomination by Dick, and I guess a second by Rick. That's fine. Yeah, all right. And are we gonna do roll calls for everything, or are we just gonna open it for I, you know, yeah and no?
It's, this is just an I vote. You just have to have the second motion that confirms that you're the Chair.
Okay, so we've closed, uh, all in favor of closing the nominations for Chair, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And all opposed? Do you hear any oppositions, uh, looking for a nomination to appoint lead to Chair?
I move to appoint Riley Holdland Chair of the Urban Renewal Budget Committee for 2020.
Thank the recommendation.
Recommendation, yeah. All right, thanks, Dick.
Okay, yep.
The second Yan, or Diane? Okay. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed? All right. I'd like to open the floor to the Vice Chair nominations.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to nominate Susan Walkie for Vice Chair. I'll second.
And seconded by Diane. All right. Do you hear any other nominations for Vice Chair of the Urban Renewal Budget Committee? All right, hearing none, I'd like to open the floor to nominations to close, or close nominations. I'll move that we close nominations. All right.
I'll second.
Who is that?
Nancy.
Oh, thanks, Nancy. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 All closed. All right. Congratulations. Or no, wait, now we'd like to not make the recommendation that Nancy Oxenholt be Vice Chair of the Budget.
Susan Walkie.
Who is it?
The nomination was for Susan.
Oh, sorry, yes. Thanks. You guys are great. All right, is there a nomination?
I nominate, I make a recommendation for Susan Walkie.
I'll second that. Wonderful. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, now we have the rules of procedure, item D. Mr., uh, Chandler, is that you?
Yes, that's me. Uh, just, uh, so first of all, it's, this is a bit odd, uh, doing a remote meeting like this. So in our rules of procedure, I'm gonna go through a little bit of, you guys are probably all familiar with Zoom, but just in case, let me go with a few things that will, um, be helpful as we go through this. First thing is I'm gonna take over your screen, uh, so you can see what, what I want you to see. Now, you should be seeing right now a, um, my name and, uh, and a yellow circle at the bottom. So what that, what, that's, um, that's your Zoom screen that you're seeing. I don't have my picture up on this one, just my name, as you can see with some of the others who aren't using video. Down at the bottom, you'll see that I've highlighted, um, participants. If you click that, the next screen that will show up will look like this, where you'll see who is on it. Now, you should have about nineteen people that are listed on it. It will show who has video, who has, uh, um, who's muted. Uh, as you can see from where I circled in yellow, I'm not muted at this point. It is very helpful, if you're not talking, to mute your microphone. There's two ways to do that. Down at the bottom, there's a, there's a little button where I've got it highlighted in, or in a red square on the right, and over on the left, I've got it on the red square on the left as well. Either one of those will mute it, and they will also unmute it. Okay, the third way is in your little picture. You can mute it through a little mute button in your picture as well. Let's see. The next thing is that, um, if, to help Chairman Holdland, if you want to make a comment, the best thing to do is to hit the raise your hand button, which you can find down at the bottom. You'll either find it as a, as a drop down or a drop up in this case, or you may see it on your screen down at the bottom. Uh, if you click that, a little hand will come up. If you click it lower, the hand will go away. Now, um, there's also the ability to chat, uh, in, in this program. Down at, right down the center, you can see chat. Um, anything that you type is public record. So Tony is recording this, so that anything that gets typed in the chat box will be, um, will be part of the record. Now, one of the nice things about this is that if you run into problems, just type in, "Tony, help me," and explain what's, what problem you're having. He is our resident techie, who is monitoring this from the council chambers and is available to help us where, where we can. As I mentioned, this is a, um, there's also a public comment period during this meeting. And, uh, there's two ways in which the public can comment. They can actually come to the building. It is open for people to come into the building, and they would, uh, meet up with Tony, and he would then assist them in, in getting on to the, getting on to the, the, the meeting. Or we have set up a special, um, email address, publiccomment@lincolncity.org. Almost all of the pages during the city council portion of this, I have put that on the pages that we're going to show, so that anybody who's watching either on Channel Four, uh, of the spec, uh, Charter, or they are streaming our, um, uh, our program, uh, from our webpage, they can email at any time. When we get to the public comment portion of it, then I will read those emails. We've been doing this, uh, with the city council meetings, and it's worked quite effectively. And so, uh, people are available to, for public comment. Now, Mr. Chair, I would suggest that, um, uh, because we have put this up, and it's gonna be up throughout the, throughout the, uh, meeting, and if anybody, um, watches it later on, they may have a public comment. I would suggest that we also have a public comment in the next meeting, so if there's anything that comes during that time period, uh, we're able to, to address that. Now, finally, this goes back to our regular, um, procedures for, um, adopting, amending, uh, and adopting, rejecting the budget, uh, that will be presented to you. It, um, it, eight people who are of, of however many are present. First of all, you have to have a quorum to participate. That's eight people. And then, to adopt the budget, or amend it, or reject it, you have to have eight people. If there's, if there's nine people, you have to have eight. If there's fourteen, you still have to have eight in order to adopt the budget. Uh, the process that we have used in the past that has been effective, um, is that, uh, as we get to the, uh, final part of the budget presentation, um, as people have, uh, are ready to make nominations, or I'm sorry, not nominations, but amendments to the budget, uh, to take those one at a time. If you know you would like to amend the budget as we go through these meetings, one of the suggestions I would make is that you send, uh, either to Debbie or me, a note, an email, or bring it up during the meeting. So if there's any research that needs to be done, we can go ahead and do that research for you. Now, there is one question, uh, Mr. Chair, that I would like to ask, because it's been a little bit, um, um, it's been a little bit... Uh, and we've done it both ways, and I'm not sure which way is the best. If somebody sends me an email and would like to have the budget amended, do you want me to share my response with everybody, or just the individual who sends me the email?
You're asking if, if, say that one more time.
So, so during, throughout this process, I will get emails from time to time, or phone calls saying, "How do I go about making a change to the budget? Can you supply some information?" or so forth. In the past, I have done it both ways. I have either shared that information with everybody, or I've just shared it with the individual who wants to make the, uh, whatever motion it is. Uh, going into this, I would like the, 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 the committee to let me know what you want me to do, if I am to share it with everybody, or if it's just with the individual who sends, whoever requests the information.
With, with, just so that, so that it's easier, if we could just get a show of hands with your little, and it's also to test how to raise your hand. Just raise your hand if you would like, Ron, to share with everybody the, the, the changes. All right.
Three. Mr. Chair, based on... Mr. Chair, based on what I saw... Mr. Chair, based on what I saw, I saw four that either raised their hand like this, or did the thumbs up thing on their screen.
Oh, there's that. Just, I want everybody, just so, because that's what I'm gonna be looking at as well. So again, in, in the actual, in the actual thing, um, the app itself, let's do that again. So remember, it's participants, you know, and then you're gonna raise your hand with the actual system dialogue, just so that we're all kind of using the same thing here. All right, so... All right. All right, so that, to be clear, Estelle and Larry are the two that do not want it.
No, I, I, I do, I do want it, but I, I can't get the raise hand thing to come up.
All right, okay.
It's unanimous.
Okay, okay.
So whatever, whatever request I receive, whether it's during the meeting, or after, uh, in between meetings, whatever response I give, I will share with everybody.
Mr. Chair, excuse me?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I'm not sure that you got Chester's vote.
Yeah.
Or Nancy.
Yeah. I don't know either, but it's...
Oh, Nancy had her hand raised. I see it now. But Chester, I don't think so.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so it's unanimous.
Thank you. Uh, with that, we are, uh, I'm gonna turn this over. We're done with the form, with the formalities. Uh, any questions on that before I turn it over to Debbie and Allison to go through the urban renewal budget?
All right, um, let's also, everyone, have your hands down. Remember, let's put our hands down. I don't know if you can, there we go, raise hand, lower hand. So that way, we're all on the same thing here. My hand won't go down. There we go. Larry, you have a question?
I don't know how to make that hand go down. Is it okay?
There you go. All right. Now I think we're ready for Ms. Bridges and Ms. Robertson. And again, let's mute everybody who's not speaking.
Hey, shall I go? This is Debbie. Okay. Um, so the urban renewal proposed budget is, is a pretty straightforward, uh, some, pretty, pretty relatively simple budget. Um, we're, you know, wind, really winding down, um, towards the end. And, um, so I think that we just go through, there's, uh, four funds in the urban renewal, and talk a little bit about each of the funds. Um, the first fund being the Urban Renewal General Fund. Uh, we continued the twenty-five percent, seventy-five percent split of the urban renewal personnel. So seventy-five percent of that is in this city, and, uh, twenty-five percent is in the Urban Renewal General Fund, under the salaries and benefits. Um, you can see we don't have any reserve, uh, or contingency budgeted, uh, in the proposed budget. We're anticipating to probably spend all the money available in this fund this year. And, uh, Allison, do you have any comments on any of the other detail lines in this budget?
Sure, thanks, Debbie. Um, I just wanted to mention that miscellaneous contracted services has, uh, three anticipated, um, budgetary items. Uh, the first one is for an urban renewal consultant for property development. Uh, we've been working with this consultant for a couple of years now. Um, and this is to basically help the staff, uh, move the four urban renewal agency-owned properties forward to redevelopment. Um, another item in that miscellaneous contracted services is for a different consultant to help us with closing out the Year 2000 Development Plan area. That's our existing urban renewal area. Um, there are a few things that we will need to do, and, uh, some of them I can do, and some of them I need help with. And, uh, we have never closed down a district before, so this is kind of exciting and new, and, uh, we wanna make sure that we do it, um, thoroughly, correctly, and that we are bringing back to the urban renewal agency the decisions that, um, are needing to be made about the assets and different things like that. So, um, that would help staff out quite a bit with that process. Uh, and then the third item we have under miscellaneous contracted services is, uh, five thousand dollars to, uh, plan for a Taft twenty-year, uh, Vision Plan Anniversary Celebration. Um, this year is the twenty-year anniversary of that vision plan, which was the first vision plan of the agency, and so we would like a little bit of money to help with volunteers and, uh, events, um, mostly just grassroots, small, you know, walking tours and, and, uh, before and after types of, um, photos and discussions about what has been accomplished in the last twenty years since we did the Taft Community Vision. Um, and we think that that would be appropriate, given that we are now winding down the urban renewal area. Are there any questions on those things?
There's, uh, one other change in this budget I'd note. Uh, in the, in the current year and in the past, uh, the Urban Renewal General Fund has transferred some monies to the city, the city's general fund and the city's Lincoln Square Fund, to pay for, um, administrative costs and building costs for urban renewal, and we did not put that in the proposed budget for the next year, just due to the small amount of funds available. And I think that's probably all of our comments, unless there's questions. Okay, um, the next page, page six, uh, just shows...
Awesome. Susan has a question, or Debbie, sorry. Go ahead, Allison, or Susan.
Um, I have a question about percent for arts, but I guess that's on the next page that you were gonna talk. Wait a minute, might you?
Okay, the percent for art, um, it gen, generally goes al, along with a capital project, and we don't have any capital projects in the general fund anymore. Um, the amount that we have in there in issue of budget really should not have been there.
Okay.
That was, that was an error. Okay.
All right, thank you.
Uh-huh. Okay, so page six just shows, um, how we come up with the estimated property taxes. Uh, it looks at the assessed value. We increase the assessed, current assessed value by three percent. And then we take a, um, estimated composite tax rate and, um, only take about twenty percent of the assessed value. So this is, Allison, is it our fourth year of underleaving?
Our fifth, yeah.
Okay, of only, only, um, using about twenty percent of the assessed value that is available. So, uh, page seven is the Tax Increment Fund for Urban Renewal. This fund collects the property taxes. Oh, sorry.
Uh, Susan, do you have a question?
No, I think I took my hand off.
Okay. Okay, Debbie, thank you. Okay, Debbie, thank you.
Okay, page seven, the Tax Increment Fund. This is the fund that collects the property taxes and it also makes the debt payment. We will have enough with our beginning fund balance and estimated property taxes collected. We are estimating that we will have enough money to pay off the remaining balance on the urban renewal bond this year. I'm assuming we can't collect more property taxes than what we can use it for for debt payment. So I think it makes sense to go ahead and schedule that payoff and save a little interest expense. And so we that is what is in the proposed budget is is to make that payment early, end of November, early December. So the interest would be half a year's worth of interest of about $30,000 and then the balance, principal balance of 1.9 million. And that would use up all the monies in this fund.
Nancy, you have a question?
There. So my question is, with this COVID-19 going on, are you decreasing a percentage of property tax? Because I have a feeling people are not going to be paying them.
There may be. We do not have any COVID impacts in in the 2021 budget. If we do not receive enough revenue, we will presumably not, or just make the scheduled payment instead of the the entire principal. We will sooner or later receive the property taxes because so far as I know, they're not being waived or forgiven. They might just be paid late.
Okay. Nancy, did you have a question?
No, that was not.
Susan, do you have a question?
Okay, next page, page eight is the Property Rehab Program. And this one I'll let Allison talk about.
Thanks Debbie. So mostly what what I'd like to draw your attention to is under Materials and Services. We have miscellaneous contracted services. So we have three items under that $32,400 proposed budget. $20,000 is proposed loan processing for economic development tools. And that's with our partner, the Cascades West Council of Governments. We will be routing up, I think, about a year and a half of partnership with them. And we've experienced great customer service and they're a wonderful resource and they have a lot of experience with loan underwriting and finances. And so we're we're pretty happy with the partnership with them for our loan program. We also have $10,000 in in-depth design assistance. And this is for folks that may be anticipating a redevelopment project but don't really know how to get started. We were finding that there were some property rehab program applicants and borrowers that just needed a little more design assistance than what we typically provide. And so then there's a third basic design assistance, which is $2,400, which basically allows for two $1,200 basic design assistance grants. And if you might remember, when people apply for a facade improvement loan, they can request up to $1,200 of design assistance that goes along with the loan if it's approved. And we've been finding that a lot of people don't need that assistance. A lot of these things are for, you know, siding or windows or paint or roof. And those are those are more what the loans have been going for. And so a lot of that basic design assistance has not been used in the past few years. We also have, on the next line item, the Economic Development Programs. Last year, we had $48,000. This year, we have no dollars allocated. The reason is because in the past years, we have provided grants to the Small Business Development Center and to the Bay Area Emergence Association for a two-year partnership, sorry, two-year pilot program for their downtown manager. That pilot program for downtown manager has run its course and the Urban Renewal Agency and the city have both decided at this time not to either create a city tool or extend the Urban Renewal Agency's tool for that downtown manager position. For the Small Business Development Center, we now have a city tool, which is for the Local Programs Port Grant. And we will be requesting that the Small Business Development Center apply for the city tool rather than the urban renewal tool, which is why there are no dollars allocated. Because the Small Business Development Center has done six years of of assistance for the businesses that are located within the urban renewal district boundary. And we have talked about how they can serve more people if they are then restricted to the city limits instead of the urban renewal area. So we would we would be looking to basically move that grant program over to the city economic development toolbox. And the city has created that tool, it just has not yet funded. And so that's to be determined. Continuing down under Special Payments, there's a line for architects and that used to be where we had funding for the the basic design assistance that came along with the facade improvement loans. But it just wasn't, that wasn't the right place for it to be. So now it's under the, not under, it's above in the miscellaneous contracted services line item under Materials and Services. So that's why that moved up there. For public-private partnership, we have $281,403. These funds, this is always basically the remaining amount. And the reason is because we want all the rest of the dollars in this in this fund to be in that category. And that category basically is used for the facade improvement loans. And that's been our most popular tool. And so we like to put the whatever amount we have left over that's not been budgeted in for facade improvement loans. For Economic Development Loan Program, we have $150,000 budgeted and that basically is for two $75,000 loans if they are applied for. I I figure every year we might have one energy efficiency loan for $75,000 and we might have one business expansion loan for $75,000, which is the 150. And then again, the remaining amount of that fund goes into the for facade improvement loans, which is under private, public-private partnership. And then, just so you're aware, you probably already know this, but those two dollar figures, if we get demand for one or the other program, there's flexibility with moving those funds. Not fund is the wrong word, sorry Debbie. But those dollar amounts can can be flexible because they are within the same part of the budget. Are there any questions on this?
I would add, unlike the first two funds, which we expect the 2021 year to be the last year that we have a budget for, this fund will continue to have a budget until if if and until and if the assets are turned over to the city. I was going to look up what the receivable balance is. About $423,000 in receivables in this fund. So at some point, the Urban Renewal Agency will need to decide what what to do with those. Okay, and then the last fund is on page nine is the Urban Renewal Construction Fund. The only revenue in this fund is the beginning fund balance, which we anticipate to be about $490,000 and then plus a little bit of interest. And then Allison, you want to talk about the capital expenditures?
Sure, thanks. So the only project we have left is One Sidewalk. This is very exciting. This is the the end of the of the Year 2000 Development Plan. Sounds like a movie title. So basically, for the last few years, we've had this project on our minds. This is one of the 2008 Cutler Community Vision projects and we call it the Baywalk Sidewalk Gap. It basically is along Highway 101 and it will connect the new improved turnout right by north of the former Bay House property in Cutler City. And it will connect to the north with the ODOT turnout that is a little bit older in in construction era. And so that's all basically south of the Spooner Creek Bridge. That sidewalk, as it turns out, we had budgeted and we started to do the design in 2016. We we were contracted for $25,000 to do the design. And as time went on, we realized that we really needed to keep our projects separated because ODOT, in their review process, was commingling all of our projects. And we just can't think about, we really only think about annual budgeting and annual annual scope of how we move our projects forward. And so we decided to kind of put that design on hold until we got the turnout project constructed. And then also the Southwest Jetty Realignment Project was done. And then we can turn our attention to this last section of sidewalk. In that time, since 2016, there were a few things that changed. One of those things is that Public Works and Urban Renewal staff felt as though the highway needed a little buffering. There was some erosion going on and we have had a few meetings with ODOT and they've been wonderful to hear our concerns and basically have supported us in doing a revised scope of design that would include some kind of shoreline stabilization, which could be riprap or could be some other measure. But we don't really know what that needs to be until they get in and do some geotechnical work and some topographic work and look at all the soils and really see what's happening there. This is a project that's all within Highway 101 ODOT right of way. So we are using local dollars to improve the state system, which is good for our locals and good for our tourists. And so this revised scope of design, engineering and permitting went from $25,000 in 2016 and we re-presented the revised scope to the Urban Renewal Agency in, I think it was December of last year. And they said, yes, we do want to do this revised scope. The revised scope will be $150,000. It is a considerable increase in design, but this is the last project that we we had, you know, kind of promised to the Cutler City community and there are capital funds that are remaining in the bond. And so the agency decided to move forward with this project. Again, this is for design, engineering and permitting. It'll take about 18 months to complete. We've already started that clock. I know that they've had their geotechnical come out already. And so they're starting to kind of wrap their minds around the information that they have so they can get that together to start working on the design. So we're not sure how far through the $150,000 we're going to get before June 30th. And so we went ahead and did $150,000 in the proposed budget because I think the majority of that work will start probably after June 30th. That was very long-winded. Are there any questions?
Allison, am I correct? And remembering, we won't really know the cost of that project either for some time. And so the amount that we have in reserve of $353,000 may or may not be enough to actually do the project in the following year?
That is correct, yes. And so it could be, well, I I think the the agency, when we did our final bond, Debbie, correct me if I'm wrong, but when we did our final bond transaction, which I think was 2017, we we heard from the agency that they wanted to finish the capital projects and then any remaining bond funds would be moved into the Property Rehab Fund or the Economic Development Toolbox for loan programs so that it could revolve over time. And so that is what we plan to do with this reserve for future years, unless there's a decision to use that toward the cost of the capital construction of this sidewalk. So there's a little bit of flexibility, but those decisions haven't been made and we won't know until we get into the design to have some kind of an engineer's estimate. So we really know, you know, are we talking about a simple sidewalk? Are we talking about breaking it up into phases? And maybe we can go after grant funds for the stabilization or, you know, different, go after different sources of money in order to get this project built.
Yes. So this fund as well could have could have a budget in 21, 22 year, depending on what's done with that reserve. I think that's all of staff's comments.
Thank you very much. We now have the review comments from citizens present. I don't hear anything, Ron, dude, or Tony, you guys have anybody there?
No, no emails on my end.
Okay. Then it's now the public hearing part? I don't have any verbiage, I don't know what you want me to say.
You could actually combine those two, but normally you need to call for a public hearing, close the hearing, and and then if there's any comments or if there's any comments after you open the hearing.
Okay.
Then close the hearing.
All right, so the time is now 5:44 PM on Monday, April 20, 2020. I'd like to open the floor for public for public hearing. And hearing none, I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move.
All right, we have a motion and we need a second to close the public hearing.
Second.
Was that Mitch? We got a second from Mitch, thank you Mitch, thank you Susan. All right, all in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, hearing none. So we have the comments from Budget Committee members. We have to adopt this, don't we, or make a recommendation?
You would do it, either make changes. Once you're done making changes, you would do a motion to approve it.
All right, I'd like to open the floor to entertain changes to the urban renewal budget. All right, hearing none. Like to entertain a motion of adopting, was it adopting then and recommending?
It's approving.
Approving, thank you Debbie. Approving the Urban Renewal Budget Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I will move that we approve the urban renewal budget for 2020 to 2021.
Second.
Second.
Can we use the hand signals, please? My hand was up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ben, there's a motion and a second, yes, Miss Indian.
I was, sorry, I was just trying to make the motion.
Okay.
It's already made.
I have it, I have it open on both sides and I heard Nick before I saw your hand. Thank you.
My mistake, sorry.
Okay, all right. May we have a roll call, please, Miss Deering?
Who seconded it? There was too many people talking at one?
But I was a hand.
I was one.
Mitch, Mitch seconded it. Let's go with Mitch.
Okay, I have Mitch.
Thank you.
We need to hold on just a second here. Okay, roll call, Dick Anderson?
Yes.
Larry Armstrong? Larry, you have to remember to unmute.
Okay, yes.
Okay, thank you. Judy Casper?
Yes.
Estelle Harlan?
Yes.
Hannah Hinton?
Yes.
Riley Hogland?
Yes.
Kevin Holmbaum?
Yes.
Diane Kuz?
Yes.
Rick Mark?
Yes.
Esther Norikas?
Yes.
Nancy Oxenholt?
Yes.
Nick Parsons?
Yes.
Lynn Skarmar? Of course, he's gone, I'm sorry, and Susan Walkie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great job, everyone. And, and everyone who has never used Zoom, great job on, on, uh, participating in the meeting. Mr. S- Mr. Chandler, I'd like to hand it over you. I don't believe we need another meeting, but.
No, that, uh, takes care of the urban renewal budget, so we won't, uh, start at 5 o'clock again. Uh, we do need to start this next meeting at 6, uh, so we've got a 10-minute break. Uh, Tony has requested that you stay on the call. So if you want to just stop your video, go grab a, a drink or something like that, just leave it on, on the, on the video and we'll start back up at 6.
Wonderful.
Please don't leave the meeting, we'll, uh, we're just going to give the microphone and then we can start at 6.
All right, so again, if everyone wants to mute their.